We now have a special session on safeguarding intellectual property while ensuring privacy, protection, issues and challenges is what we are going to be talking about. Now to moderate this panel discussion, we have with us Mr. Kazim Rizvi, who is the founding director at the Dialogue. And as our esteemed panelists to share with us their perspectives, we are being joined here by Ms. Shahana Chatterjee, partner at Shardulamachan Mangalda's company. Ms. Gori Gokhle is partner with Nishant Desai Associates. Deepak Talvar, chairman of the Asajam National Council on Cyber Security, National Cyber Security at Microsoft. We also have with us Mr. Rahul Jain, once again. Now he is the head of the Public Policy, Digital and Devices India at Amazon. And Mr. Venkatesh Krishnamoorthy is country manager of BSA, the Software Alliance. So without any further ado, Mr. Rizvi, may I hand it over to you to take the session forward from here?
Thank you. And I think we'll wait for, I think Shahana will join whenever she can, but I think we'll introduce.
Shahana will join in another one minute.
Okay, so let's just begin and I think we'll introduce, we'll get Shahana when she is here. So thank you all for joining in today and welcome to this discussion. First of all, thank you to Asajam for organizing this important dialogue, if I may use that word, in terms of the new data protection bill and the various aspects which have been discussed over the last few months. But some of the key themes which require a lot more deliberation in terms of the new data protection bill and the committee's report which was published in December. For the next one hour, the focus for this panel will be to discuss the intellectual property issues while ensuring privacy protection and the issues and challenges with respect to intellectual property rights and how that intersects with some of the new measures that have been proposed by the Joint Parliamentary Committee, which includes A, the inclusion of non-person data in the new bill. As all of us know that the new bill is the data protection bill. The second theme is disclosure of algorithms. So we will focus on how IP rights intersect with the new mandate within the bill when it comes to disclosure of algorithms. And the third is around data portability. So these are the three areas where sort of we want to focus for today. And we have a great set of speakers who will be talking with us on the intersection of IP and these themes. I will not introduce the speakers because they've already been introduced. But I just wanted to lay down some of the ground rules for the next one hour. We'll start with each and every speaker. We'll give every speaker up to three minutes to give their opening remarks. And then after the first round of opening remarks, we'll then have a Q and A session where every speaker will get around six to eight minutes to share their opinions and their ideas. So with that, I also wanted to sort of just give a little bit of an introduction on some of the areas where, you know, we will be focusing. Number one is of course the inclusion of non-person data in the PDP bill. The second is on algorithm, the algorithmic disclosure of algorithms. So of course, the JPC has suggested algorithm disclosures. We will discuss those and the third will obviously be around data portability. A little bit on data portability is the fact that they've spoken about the need to have certain mandates from the judiciary. So how that will impact their IPs. So without wasting any further time, I just want to sort of bring our first speaker. I'd like to start with Mr. Talvar, if you may come in. And Mr. Talvar, you're of course being championing the cause of the industry. So would love to get your remarks in terms of how it impacts the industry at large and then we'll move to other speakers. So Mr. Talvar, over to you.
Thank you, Kazim. I hope I'm audible and visible.
Absolutely.
Good. I think fortunately I got to set up the foundation as well as as part while learning through this esteemed panel and knowing our colleagues on the other side. Few of them very well known as well in many of the panels. Venky, you are one of them virtually, just to raise, that's the best way to connect on this virtual platform. And thank you, Asajam, for, you know, again, starting a session which is more very close while as any other country and even if I say as a citizen, I would love to have, you know, something which can ensure and safeguard my privacy, right? That's what I'll start with that personal intent as well as how we see as a corporate. So first, there are three areas which I thought to start and open that discussion, not talking about non-personal data, even the softwares and hardwares getting into it or the regimes which are being added on data portability and other stuff. But what is most important is at least one fact, we all can establish that the value assets or high-value data, what we call, do have a value. Let's understand and establish that fact wherever it sits, whether it is critical data, sensitive data, non-personal data, the way the format comes in. And the reason I brought that on a positive note is at least we call it as in three key areas. If I see what is the purpose of the data is societal impact. The second impact I personally feel is also on economy and the third impact is governance. So if I am the user, I own my privacy. It has been well established, privacy is a fundamental right and my data should be owned by us, which is good. But is this something going to also help me to improve my health because of doing better analytics with all the technologies? Then I think it will create a societal impact. And that's where we need to think about all the models of free flow of data so that we can do a good cause to the, you know, the society. The second part I would like to touch in my opening point is on economy. At least we all agree that if for the good purpose, if data is being utilized, processed, stored, retained, right to be forgotten and all those processes which is written. Again, personal data, non-personal data can be various topics to look into. But is it going to create an economical scale answer in hundred percent? Yes, there is no way we can scale in this large moving petabytes of data being created. And that too, when out of that, I hope you all agree that seventy, eighty percent of the data is not a quality data unless we segregate that data well. So it's not just about holding or data localization, it is also about how do we do it? And the third part is governance. If I'm utilizing that data, maybe on a lighter note, it can be misutilized. It can be having infringement. It can have something as small as I'm creating a content which can be, you know, not being protected well by a lawful way under copyright. So I might lose the originator credibility. So Kazim, I would set the tone here that there are three ways into it and intellectual property, which is the topic, has a lot to do with economy. So it's not just the privacy and data protection, which I'll talk a little bit more. Before I pass on, we, in one of the article I was reading, we are on forty-third number out of fifty-five, fifty-three to fifty-five countries in one of the, I think, US Chamber Commerce Report index in terms of IP. So that is where we need to think when we see where we stand in Indian cybersecurity. We have done twenty points, right? Whereas in IP, we are still looking into and that too, where we have thirty to forty percent may not be even aware about what is IP in the rural side of the world. I'll stop here, Kazim.
Thank you, Mr. Talvar. I think that was a, I think, important opening remarks and I'll get others to come in. Rahul, over to you. And you know, of course, you know, Amazon has been doing a lot of work in India and I just would have wanted to get your perspective in terms of these three themes and where do we go from here? So over to you.
Kazim, pleasure to be here and thanks to Asajam for the opportunity. So I think privacy protection is an important element for digital economy. I think we all agree and I think the previous speakers have stressed that as well. And because it primarily helps improve consumer trust in the digital economy and increases accountability of companies as well. So this is important and I think our country needs a timely data protection law. So I think we all agree on that front. At Amazon, we use, you know, customer data responsibly to improve experiences with Amazon, you know, from personalizing online shopping experience to enabling Alexa to recognize different accents and dialects. Across all of Amazon's products and services, our approach to privacy begins with three key priorities, which is transparency, customer control and security. And these are some of the things which again, the data protection bill also is trying to enhance in certain ways. But you know, coming to the issue of IPR, what we strongly believe that, you know, privacy protection can be achieved without diluting the intellectual property rights. I think it is possible and we have seen, you know, legislation like GDPR or even like California Privacy Act successfully navigating through those issues without, you know, raising any alarms on IP issues as such, right? So in that context and coming to the Indian data protection bill in that frame of reference, I think it's important that the regulatory goals, if they are privacy protection, then we can, you know, move forward. But if there are other regulatory goals which, you know, come into the legislative process, so be it competition, be it economic value of data and I think the earlier speakers again refer to that, actually, you know, creates a situation where there could be conflicts with the existing IP copyright patent regimes globally as well as domestically. And the debate becomes very complex and time-consuming. Also important for us to understand that the IPR regimes, if you look at, you know, various studies, progressive IPR regimes in multiple countries have shown that innovation and knowledge diffusion is actually enhanced in jurisdiction, you know, where laws provide adequate protection to proprietary assets and trade secrets. And in that context, we have to see the data protection bill that whether it is, whether there is an overreach in terms of, you know, IP rights. And finally, I would say that, you know, we all should not look at the PDP, the data protection bill as a fix for all the issues. I think the law will address the data protection part and then it will evolve. And there could be other pieces of legislation that can come in to address some of the other regulatory goals that you were talking about. And if you look at EU, like GDPR has been the pioneering act, we all know. But then, as I think Corinna from SAP also mentioned, that EU is now proposing a data act, right? There are the issues of economic value of data, so and so forth, are being discussed separately outside the data protection legislation. And that's the right forum perhaps to, you know, kind of take up these issues. So I think in light of this, you know, we are hopeful that government will hear industries' concerns on IPR as far as this bill is concerned and factor that in and maybe narrow down the regulatory goals to pure data protection so that we all can move forward with it. Thank you. That's the initial remarks, Kazim, and I can obviously comment to specific questions.
Thank you all. I think very important remarks there. I think a couple of things which I take back is one, clear separation of objectives, right? I think the objective of data protection bill is to protect privacy and protect data. I think that's something which really highlighted about. And I think there, in terms of administrative law and in terms of, you know, identifying the problems, the key challenges and then looking at it separately, like there is an NPD committee looking at non-person data regulation. As you mentioned, how GDPR is doing and then there's a new act which is looking at the economic value of data totally separate from the GDPR bill, the GDPR law. So I think that's an important point. And also in terms of, you know, the overall dilution, I think that's an important point you mentioned. And the interaction with IP regimes, will there be a conflict with the existing IP regime in India or not? So there are a lot of legal administrative questions also coming out from this discussion. And I think no better time to go to Gori, who's a lawyer and who's a partner with Nishant Desai Associates and one of my sort of, you know, colleagues who we work together, we've interacted in so many forums. Gori, I think there are a couple of regulatory aspects which I wanted you to come in. In terms of A, how this interacts with the existing IP regime in India, you know, not just for big companies but even smaller companies or any startup which wants to invest in India. Will this conflict the existing IP regime? And number two is also in terms of separation of objectives, right? I think what Rahul mentioned was important in terms of clearly identifying goals and then creating the regulatory architecture, not just sort of bringing everything together. So over to you.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for this opportunity and I'll take the second item first and add to what Rahul said as well. I completely agree that especially when we are putting our foot forward for the first time for a comprehensive data protection regime and we want to get it right, the moment you start adding other elements, maybe Rahul didn't want to mention this, but such as competition law or other aspects, right? The movement or economic objectives, et cetera, right? So the moment you start adding the non-personal data elements, you are just diluting the complete focus on the data protection and security. That is of the prime importance and we have to get that right. The moment you start mixing things, it will, you know, it will distract. Second, I also want to talk about especially when you, you know, when we will get into portability and all that. But I want to talk about right from the constitutional, you know, when the constitution was set up, what did the lawmakers do or the, you know, what did the committee do? They said fundamental rights, we are guaranteeing immediately. But there will be certain directive principles of state policy which as the country progresses, slowly we will start getting in and you saw right to education come in as Article 21 Capitole at a later stage, right? So in my view, even when you are talking about even within the data protection regime, it will be very difficult and you saw even today, twenty eleven IT rules are not being implemented. Forget anything else, right? So when you have that type of level unfortunately or lack of level of maturity in the Indian system, can we take even a graded approach vis a vis even the rights of the data subjects, right? Or the data principles, right? So I want to even bring that to the fore. Can, do we want to push all the rights that all the, you know, developed economies or otherwise have at one go? Or can we take even a graded approach even for those rights? And let us examine how they have shaped up. Because if you see twenty twenty-one, there is some report, you know, in the, from a data portability perspective, even within the EU, even the knowledge of that right is only twenty-five percent. Forget the, you know, implementation, right? So that is what I want to put on the table and coming to the IPR. And you asked me whether, you know, from whether it conflicts with the current, you know, scheme or not. I want to deal with that in a slightly different way and when we get into more details, I'll deal in a more detailed manner. But I don't think we need to look at the IP as existing today. Because even if you see the committee report, they say we don't know how the trade secret will be defined. Therefore, take it out, right? That's a very, very short, you know, sort of term view to be taken. We need to see what is the right thing to do. And one most important aspect I want to say when we talk in the context of IP is that I completely agree that when I'm giving my data, it is my data, right? The data that I have given. But there are certain data sets which are mixed data sets, which is also business data of the businesses or the entities or for that matter even of the government. When you have mixed data sets, that is the time when you have to think about broader concept than just the IPR, whether copyright, one can argue, no, there is no copyright. I don't want to get into that discussion. I want to get into the discussion as to when you have that data set which is that of the business from a competitive perspective, right? How do we balance the personal rights and the business rights, right? Because even, you know, even, you know, if you start getting into the current law which we have in India IP, you will get lost because you may not find much there, right? But I want to see why the IP rights is to give that competitive advantage. So from a competitive advantage perspective, how do we balance these rights? And there has to be a very detailed discussion vis a vis that. So these are my initial comments. Happy to get into further details.
I think a couple of important segments here is also the lack of unanimous standards, right? So when it comes to this data sharing, there isn't enough clarity. And I think you really mentioned an important point, you know, when you started your point, that there isn't enough clarity even within what the JPC is trying to do with respect to intellectual property. So where do we go from here? It can either be great or it could either lead us to a very sort of a different place. And I sort of, one thing I really want to understand is the investor sentiments and investor confidence in India. And because I think policy certainty and regulatory clarity is essential for us to invest in our digital economy because we know that the new economy will be driven by the tech economy in the next ten to fifteen, twenty years. So the data protection bill is not going to be a bill for the next three or five years. It will really set the tone for India's future. And I think this is where I want to bring in Venky, who's working with BSA and, you know, Software Alliance. And Venky, I mean, apart from the areas you, I would like you to focus on, also just a little bit on what does it mean for the investors, for global investors, for businesses at large, you know, who look at India as a destination for investment? So your sort of three-minute remark and then we'll come back on further questions. Over to you, Venky.
Perfect. Yeah, thanks. So thanks, thank you for, Asajam, for putting this together. I was looking forward to it. So and hello to all these fellow panelists. So Kazim, I'll jump directly to the question that you asked me first and then maybe go over to some of the issues on investor sentiment. Technology has become sort of the underlying layer for all companies and, you know, individuals to interact, right? I mean, that's become, that's become more true through the pandemic and it was, it was a digital transformation that we saw in the last two years that has brought us to a point where we are able to have this conference completely virtual. And, you know, it is seamless in that sense as well, right? So all companies are looking at, you know, growth, their growth story in India. Whether it's Indian companies trying to grow in India, global companies trying to grow in India. And the way they're able to establish trust with the consumers is through technology. The last couple of years, we've seen, you know, a lot of policies from Mayti, from DOT, from a lot of government bodies. Obviously, the personal data protection bill has been on the top of some of these legislation. If you were to ask me, there has been a considerable amount of uncertainty that it has brought about. I mean, it started off as a personal data protection with looking at privacy. And now we find issues around non-personal data and even this discussion, it's around the intersection of intellectual property and data, which is a nebulous emerging field even in established technology markets, well, you know, technology stories, growth stories a little ahead of the curve. So this uncertainty would definitely deter, you know, the estimate that you could take on a market for the next five to ten years. I mean, you look to plan in advance for a market, you try to anticipate these curves, not just as a technology company, bear in mind also as say, maybe an airline company or a toy maker. At BSA, we also have another initiative called the Global Data Alliance, where we are able to work with a broader range of companies. So I want to flag that this uncertainty brings to the table some negative sentiment for investors. That said, Indian market has so much potential that investors would be able to look past that if these basics are fixed. Those were a direct answer to your question. And I also get to set the stage for further remarks that I would give through the discussion. On NPD, as I mentioned, it's broadening of the scope. On these other two clause, twenty-three, one inch and clause nineteen, what you're talking about in terms of disclosure of algorithms and trade secret exemptions that are sought in the data portability clause. In both these cases, we see that the bill is not clear. I would say more than anything that the language requires further clarity. So definitely this bill requires additional consultation at a broader level. So, you know, I'll stop with those remarks to start with. We are at that cusp of a digital revolution globally and in India, we are at the forefront of it if not the leaders, right? So definitely it requires a lot of thought, deliberation to make sure that such a bill would enhance and foster the trust that consumers can place on the digital medium. Thank you.
Thanks, Venky, and we'll come back to you on some detailed questions. And I think one thing which I'm sort of getting from this discussion is the lack of clarity and, you know, the language of the draft, right? I think there needs to be a lot more clarity in regards to what the committee is trying to achieve or what may be the objective of the bill, you know, when it comes to exemption of KTC or any other point. Even with regards to non-person data, right? It's done in a sort of probably an ad hoc manner. There are certain clauses which included, but then there are a lot of areas which are left for further discussion. Shahana, I want to come to you on this point as well and just terms of the legal language and the objectives of the bill per se. And you know, something which also Gori also mentioned, you know, on the administrative law part or the regulatory points, if you can also touch a little bit upon the conflicts as well as looking at the language of the draft as well. So over to you.
Much and good afternoon to all the panelists and participants and thank you, Asajam, for this. I think, you know, to pick up from what everyone else on the panel has said and what Gori also specifically said, as a legal practitioner, I'm getting increasingly concerned about the lack of clarity, not just in the combing of the objectives, but also the process that is being used by the lawmakers and by the government, right? We are academically speaking at a very interesting point of the data governance framework here in India. We have the government talking about holistic data protection bill. We have them talking about e-commerce. We have them talking about more accountability for intermediaries. We have them now talking about data accessibility, protocols applicable to the government. So it's very interesting if you look at the broader scheme of things on what's happening. But I think what is very concerning is the lack of process. And what exactly is the objective over here? Is the idea that listen, we want to build a comprehensive data governance strategy for India, which other jurisdictions like the EU have done and then take off from there and build verticals or build, you know, on those primary themes that are identified under those strategies? Or do we want to focus on just data protection or do we want to focus on building digital economy? Because I think the way the data protection bill and especially the parliamentary committee report is shaping up is that it's not just a broadening of the objective of what was meant to be a personal data protection bill, which focused on the privacy of an individual while balancing, you know, the growth of the digital economy. We are also now seeing, Kazim, the inclusion of national security, right? And how do we protect national security, weigh that against individual privacy, informational security, digital economy? Those don't all work under one regulatory framework, right? And even if we were to find a way to make that work, it would need a lot more consultation and a lot more legal regulatory analysis. And I think, you know, the kind of conflicts that we had seen even in the initial draft of the bill around, you know, data portability, how does that work with? Or to what extent will that dilute IP rights, commercial rights? And, you know, juxtapose that against the very rapid nature in which commercial rights around digital assets are changing, right? It's not just simple licensing frameworks that we're seeing now. There is, you know, a lot more complexity around data sharing. There's a lot more complexity about how ownership is identified and attributed contractually. So if you juxtapose that and then, you know, bring in these regulatory statutory elements of saying that, you know, data portability has to happen in a certain manner. You have to identify high-value data sets, you know, NPD high-value data sets. You have to mandatorily share them. How does that work in the context of, say, even some of the rights that are being granted to data subjects, right? How does that work in the broader context of what the government wants to introduce as elements of protecting national security? So several points of, I think more than conflict, I think points that need further deliberation, that need further analysis and study. And I think a very deliberate pause needs to be given to think through what is a process? What is the strategy? What are we trying to achieve? And I think, you know, the different utterances that we've heard from the minister and from the MOS in the last few days, while it does create a little bit of confusion about, you know, what to expect. I think to me, I'm seeing that as a silver lining. You know, if this is going to give pause to the government to try and reconsider, to try and bring some rationality to this approach, I think that's a great opportunity. And, you know, all eyes on what's going to happen next.
Thank you, Shahana. I think, you know, a lot of food for thought and I think for other speakers also. I think one really important point I think is coming is on the process, right? So there is, there are objectives to be achieved. The committee is looking at high-value data sets coming to be shared, the whole aspect of dilution of rights. So I think all these aspects, how do they really interact with this particular bill? Let's just go a little bit deep into these questions. And I'd like to sort of go back to Mr. Talvar. Mr. Talvar has been around and would probably ask you a couple of questions on this and then we'll sort of go ahead. We like to spend not more than six to eight minutes with every speaker because I do know that there are time limitations and we can continue to go on and on with these discussions. But Mr. Talvar, over to you. And a couple of things which I really sort of want to get your opinion is number one on innovation, right? And just your perspective on how the intersection of IP and, you know, the demand which is being created from the particular bill, you know, with regards to, you know, high-value data sets to be shared, you know, exemptions for state secret when it comes to data portability, even just whether there is, and it seems there is a dilution of commercial rights over data assets. How will this impact the innovation in India's digital economy? If you can sort of touch upon it a little bit more on that, over to you.
Not easy. It's a lengthy and a complex question. Ask too many pointers in between, but I'll try to put some pointers to it. Spend a minute on problem. We all understand the problem and we all can be little interactive to spend a lot of time for other audience later on to listen on the answers to it. So one thing I would like to talk upon is when you said research and innovation. Let me take an example which will qualify these answers as well. I'll take three actually sectors. One is healthcare, we can't avoid that. Second, when Rahul started talking and giving some point, it gave me a sense of what about startups? You also brought up, Kazim. And third, suddenly I was thinking when, when Venky and especially seeing the legal side of Gori and Shahana, I was thinking, are we really good on enterprise and government? Are we thinking about this whole? I was thinking, are we really good on enterprise and government, are we thinking about this whole I P R? With with the twenty percent of the backbone of G D P with the S M Es or the enter mid enterprises, right? Where I P R is still to be learned. If you see startups, I personally feel as I P R, right? As Rahul mentioned, can be disseminated, making it too complex to simplifying that stuff, which is great. But it is also important that all those research, it's like I have created something as a startup. Am I putting my innovation at risk because of disclosing it under I P R? Question to ponder upon, right? Whether it is part of N P D or data protection bill, I'll not debate on that, but I would say definitely it requires ponder upon with the legal and research form. The second part, learning from global aspects, Kazim, G D P R also talks a a little bit, if we see the articles, it actually talks about I P also as part of fundamental rights. I have read it, we can quantify and quantify, right? And the third part, when we are talking about this digitization, how it impacts? So it impacts healthcare because there is no clarity on what is high value data sets. If we ask all of us together that tomorrow, let's assume data protection comes as it is, including N P D, right? First of all, at least in 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 one of the opinion, I would say it should not be delayed for several years to have the best innovation. No law can be formed in one go, so I would like to thank Government of India doing best work. Keeping it simple within data protection regime and then making it in steps to non-personal data and all can come added. Good or bad is 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 tomorrow. And the second part is on on the on the nuances of fairness like algorithms and trade secret. Question to ask is, small and mid enterprises who are creating small innovations, they are less educated on I P rights. Uh rather, they are even in the in the early journey of digital transformation. How are they going to manage those I P rights while they also have to pay for regulations? Are we impeding the cost on top of I P rights? So one, they have to safeguard from the threat intelligence, cyber threats and national state threat vectors which can impact them as N M S M E. Second, they also need to adhere to the compliance, the data protection will, you know. And third, they need to go global, as I started my conversation in economical growth. How are those algorithms and trade secret? Because end of the day, I P R is not just I P R, if we consolidate all false under I P rights, the trade secrets, the copyrights and the infringement, right? So if I get an attack and there is a breach and that breach has caused my trade secrets, where do you want to put that? Under the law or national cybersecurity strategy or under the regime? And by the way, if that happens because of technology, we all providers, we have Rahul on call, B S A can give the consultancy. We platform providers when we hold the data with analytics and A I, that data is not belonging to any human beings or people only, it is being processed by machines. How are you maintaining that for small enterprises? A few points to ponder upon, so we require governance practice and most importantly to simplify the process. And should start with data protection bill and may add up non-personal data is where I stop, Kazim.
One question uh on this also is uh how let's, I also wanted to get your sense on non-person data specifically, right? And how does the inclusion of non-person data in the bill, the current uh data protection bill? How does that really infringe or may infringe upon I P rights? And if it does, then what would be the payout?
Right, so first of all, the category itself is huge. So my worry will be more that the non-personal data should be obviously looked into governance side. It may come, as I said, in stage, will it impact hugely impact?
Hmm.
Worry is not the governance gets put into it, tomorrow, as I said, let's launch non-personal data. If I am a platform provider, ask Rahul as well and others on the call, are we ready to control that data locally in the country? It's it's already launched tomorrow. So the impact is also about not regulation, it's a trade off between innovation and regulation, right? So the impact is a trade off, would I like to innovate and utilize the data which can scale my economy? Or is it more of controlling the data being localized and then putting I P R wrapper and other rights on non-personal data? I think that the data itself is huge, are we in a position to even handle that data? Right? That's most important for me as an impact. And second, on top of it, while you are still thinking and struggling around to disseminate that data. You know, the most important point of the topic we can also put upon is today dissemination of data is pretty fast, within seconds I can disseminate worldwide that data. And most most important thing, that dissemination of data is very cheap. On a very low cost data, I can even launch an attack and on a on a very low cost data, I can even launch a new application. Now, when I put non-personal data on top of it, I think it will it will be little complex, so can we simplify that process?
Understood, thank you, Mister Talvar, I think very important points and Rahul, I'll come to you in terms of specific issues around algorithms and disclosure and data portability. But I think one key learning is, you know, the trade of between regulation and innovation, that's an important point. And just generally also, you know, the kind of investments which is being put in in terms of analytics, data analytics and sort of invest collecting data. Let's suppose collecting raw data or percentage and then using various kind of techniques and technological investments by companies, it could be startups or big companies. To then further process it and then create some sort of an intelligence, right? On which markets are created and on which basis which services are then produced and delivered to the people. Will that entire business model be impacted by the data protection bill? So Rahul, I wanted to get your sense on this and generally also on the issues around data portability and algorithmic disclosure, over to you.
Yeah, I think on the uh you know, regu- impact of regulation on innovation in the context of the J P C recommendations. I mean, I just I can just give it one example, right?
Yeah.
So the earlier version of the bill said that anonymized data uh will be excluded, uh which is again a very common practice across the world, including in the G D P R. But now J P C has recommended that anonymized data should also be in the scope. Now, this obviously will have an impact if government decides to include anonymized data within the framework. It obviously will have a huge impact on the innovation because if you look at a lot of startups which Mister Talvar was talking about. Uh there is uh a lot of, you know, this entire industry, data analytics, et cetera, right? Which thrives on anonymized information, right? And it's a good thing because it takes care of privacy, assuming that, you know, anonymization standards and, you know, um. Very high uh level of, you know, privacy preserving technologies and processes are applied on this data and then this is anonymized. Then I think it is it is great because an industry can use it and build on it, right? Uh so, not compromising on privacy, so. So that's why, uh you know, if 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 the uh the final bill includes it, it will be a deterrent, uh I think, because. People will be more cautious of using even anon- anonymized data because they may not want to get into legal and compliance related, you know, obligations. So that is one example, the other related point is also a lot of publishing of socioeconomic data is happening. Uh you know, be trends, analysis on search or other stuff because people are able to anonymize data and then like, you know, publish it. And that also, I think, uh may have an impact if we include anonymized information within the scope of the P D P. So that's on the anonymized uh data as an example to talk about innovation and regulation.
Right.
The other uh important issue from I P R point of algorithmic transparency, uh that's an important issue and I think. Uh we have to understand that, you know, companies invest hugely, you know, in terms of building and improving algorithms. They are used uh you know, for to better serve, you know, users in terms of personalization, what they want to see on the surveys, et cetera, et cetera. And continuously innovate, so it's a very important ingredient in a in a business model, algorithm, right? So any excessive disclosure uh right can impinge on the I P rights, uh so we have to be mindful. And I think if you look at the same debate which has been happening for last five to ten years is around source code, the similar kind of a debate, right? Source course, source code needs to be, you know, protected under the I P regulations. In fact, a lot of trade agreements, if you look at internationally today or even like at a ban letter level, have provisions with safeguard disclosure of, you know, uh. Uh uh source codes between countries, right? So those agreements are already there. So in that context, I think it's important that excessive information should not be, should not be asked to reveal. However, there is a very important regulatory objective of user transparency. I think there is a general understanding within the government and also in the community that how the algorithms work, you know, how does, how do, how do decisions being taken? And to that extent, I think it's important to focus on transparency as a concept when it comes to how algorithms work. And many companies voluntarily today do publish lot of information in terms of what are the principles that go behind designing a particular algorithm. Now, for a common user, you know, he or she may not be interested to understand, you know, the ditty gritties, you know, and nuts and bolts of an algorithm, they will be lost. Because it's very technical, obviously, so it's not for everybody, but as long as the information is helpful and relevant for user. I think P D P bill should, you know, ask companies to, you know, disclose that information as part of maybe the privacy notice, for instance, right? It could be part of that. So to that extent, I think uh I think the industry would be aligned is what we believe. And finally, from a regulatory perspective, right? If there is a breach, right, or if there is anything which is problematic, there could be. In investigations that can be done, there could be audits that can be done, right? Which is need to need need to know basis, governments can also define, by the way, standards or thresholds to assess fairness of algorithm, right? So instead of asking for the information, you put out a uh standard which says that, okay, if you are as a company, uh you know, assessing your framework from a fairness point of view. These are the ten things you should really, you know, uh take into consideration, that could be a good way of progressing. And finally, I will conclude on the transparency point is that the P D P bill, right? Uh already has lot of checks and balances as it exists today around processing of uh data and how fairness should be part of it. And I'm not talking about algorithm specifically, but generally overall, from a privacy governance point of view, right? So data.
Data cycle, you mean from the start of the data cycle to collection?
Correct, data protect impact assessments have to be done, right?
Okay.
Internal audits, data protection officers have to be there, privacy enhancing technologies have to be used, privacy by design policy. So all this will definitely contribute in terms of enhancing accountability within the company when it comes to, I know, things like algorithmic. Uh you know, determinations and use of personal data in that context, so so I will stop at that, Kazim.
Yeah, no, I I think very important here, Rahul, I think sort of looking at fairness and transparency. And that is something which is great to see that, you know, the industry is aligned and want to work towards it and is working towards it. And some of the ideas which you propose, you know, around data protection impact assessment, you know, and start from the beginning of the data protection cycle to collection. Processing, storage, et cetera, I think that that's a very important point. Uh and also, I think one very important point is what I picked up earlier is around, you know, excessive disclosure and user transparency, right? So these two sort of things have to be balanced together. Uh business models operate with respect to collection and of course processing of data. And absolutely right, I think when you talk about algorithms, because they are a trade secrets and where do we sort of, you know, stop the buck in terms of saying, okay, this is. The amount of permission which we want to give to the users in terms of for the transparency process. But over and above, you know, if we start disclosing everything, then our entire business model fails, right? So I think that's something which we have to be a little protective of. And uh Gori, I want to come to you now in terms of, you know, just building on this this point, you know, this uh, I wouldn't call it a dichotomy, but this whole uh. Uh balancing act of user transparency and and excessive disclosure, how do we achieve that balance? Because we know and that's a question for Venky, in fact, with G D P R doesn't do this uh in terms of how it operates. And I don't know if there are any global examples to follow for us, uh maybe we are the first of its kind uh which who are trying to achieve all these objectives within the data protection bill itself. But, you know, how do we achieve that balance of uh, you know, user transparency while making sure that company's I P is protected? Because it's not about big companies, uh it's also about startups and new entrepreneurs and even investors who will see India, okay? There are enough protection for commercial interest, right? So I think that's an important point and, you know, we then will pick up from this, over to you, Gori.
Uh you know, I always try to look at all these issues in, you know, by asking three questions, right? Why, what and how, right? So why are we doing this? If so, what do we need to do and how are we doing, right? So let me uh, so I don't believe that why and what whatever discussions we have had and whatever otherwise also have spoken with industry. I don't think there is so much debate on the first two questions, right? Everybody agrees there's, you know, protection is required, et cetera. I'm not talking about non-personal data here, my conversation is currently on personal data, right? How is the question, right? So the transparency, just to give an, just to take that point forward, if transparency is the objective, right? And why is because of fairness, et cetera? And what is the, you know, manner in which we are doing transparency? As you know, that Department of Telecommunications on twenty-second Feb actually has come out with a proposal that can be established standards. For fairness in the A I system, just as an example, right? So if these are the standards to be established, because I completely agree that for a regular user, what is algorithm or how i- is they they don't care? Is it fair to me or not? Is is that the way to look at it? And honestly, if I read the provision, if you see the J P C report, it's quite vague. But if you read the provision, I can even argue that I don't need to disclose the algorithm. I need to disclose whether my algorithm is fair fair or not, because if you see the weight is worded, right? And that is where I feel that some kind of drafting clarity brought in, I think we will solve this. And if you, you know, actu- actually establish the fairness standards, you are actually then marrying everything together, right? So I think uh you you know, I just want to leave this thought with everybody on this panel, just to revisit that wording. And whether we can argue that there is no expectation of disclosure of actual algorithm, it's only the fairness that needs to be disclosed. Now coming to, and of course, when I'm disclosing fairness, I need to know the standards against which I'm disclosing it, right? So that is where you marry the entire transparency process, right? Uh because again, when I'm I'm talking about users, right? In India, you know, there are public interest litigations also, so there are these, you know, like civil societies, public minded individuals, they are the. Guardians of the public rights, you know, public rights as well. So if they understand it, that is good enough in my view, you know, you don't need like each and every individual to understand it because each individual is not going to go and enforce that, right? Honestly, on a practical level, right? That's the way I look at it. Second, same thing on the portability, right? Now, under G D P R, as we know, it is the information provided by me, right? Again, why portability, right? That is my question in the first place. I don't think anybody has given me clear answer why portability, is it for competition uh perspective? Is it for, you know, benefit of the user perspective? What is it that we are, you know, what is the genesis of that? Even the report is, you know, wishy washy, there is no clear discussion for asking for other data, the info data and the like. Now, I understand that, just to take an example, there was a discussion on say medical health data, correct? Obviously, if I'm with one, you know, hospital chain, my data is with them, I want to ship to the another hospital chain, it is my data, right? Ultimately, my health data, obviously, I will ask for portability fair enough. But when it's a combination, that suppose I'm on a say e-commerce website, my buying habits, my, you know, watching the advertisements, clicking habits and all of that. Are peculiar to that website. Now tell me if that interaction or whatever or my whatever, my interaction on another e-commerce website will be completely different because their. Uh you know, ecosystem may be different. So what even what is even the benefit I have not understood of, you know, transferring this data and and maybe completely naive in speaking here, you know, in this manner here. But I completely want to understand what is the benefit? And one very interesting, you know, example that somebody gave me, you know, to say that can the then the companies, you know, try to motivate these individuals to say. Come to my platform, just as an example, say O T T platforms, right? My watching habits are on one O T T platform. Will the other O T T platform say that, hey, you know, I'm motivating you to get your data ported to me of your, you know, habits and all of that? I'll give you a free subscription. Somebody asked me this question, right? So are you even creating a healthy ecosystem by providing, you know, these sort of things? Honestly, I don't have, I'm just raising the questions I know, but I believe these questions need to be answered before we crystallize the portability as a thought process. I'm okay with the information that I have provided, fair enough, it's a, you know, it's a user friendly thing in a manner in which I want to shift from one system to the other. But all the other data, it's a combination of business data and that is where the, you know, the I P and trade secrets and all these things come into play. And therefore, a complete balancing act is required and revisiting of uh, you know, even the benefit of that, let me put it this way. Even G D P R has not been able to pro- provide, you know, demonstrate the benefit through their, you know, survey that they have carried out, right?
But what could be the balancing act? Maybe a.
Balancing act, I said, right? From a portability data which I provide, right? Okay, there is an ease for me to transfer that data, you know, again, I have to fill up the data fields and whatever. I can understand portability of that, that's the balancing act, right? All the other data sets are unique to the platform, right? That is their I P, that is the manner in which they have done my profiling, it is their unique thing and and honestly, from my.
Taking that away, very important.
Yeah, and and how how, whether it, see, because all the courts also, when they look at the provisions, right? They want to see the empirical data, right? Is there a, you know, when you ban certain activities and all you have seen, right? From the I M I judgment of the Supreme Court, anything that you know, you need empirical data, right? What is the empirical data of benefit of the to the users of this user profile being transferred? I have no, I mean, I don't know whether there is even any study done in this regard, right? Uh and and of course, there has to be a balancing act, as I said.
Yeah, thank you, Gori, uh I think time permits, we'll try come back to you, but uh Venky, I want to come to you in terms of, you know, the. Uh Venky, I want to come to you in terms of, you know, the global impact, uh let's say the international impact it may have on India as. Uh emerging, in fact not emerging, pretty much emerged as a one of the leading data economies, you know, and we spoke about G D P R earlier that, you know. It doesn't really sort of envisages such restrictions uh to write to data portability, uh you know. So there isn't any for a particular reference in G D P R as well, uh while at the same time, you know, I just want to understand what impact it may have. Uh let's say, transnational companies, how they may be impacted in India, companies which are, you know, global in nature. Which have investments across the country and they're trying to work in India and sort of set up base in India and, you know, should be part of the global. Be part of India's growing digital economy. So how this could impact the Indian ecosystem from a global perspective? And also just a little bit more on the whole uh issue around disclosure, what is excessive disclosure in your opinion, right? Where do we draw the line and a little bit on the whole idea around fairness? So over to you.
Uh thanks cousin, uh also mindful of time, so how much time do we have and uh so that I'll.
Think we have ten minutes, Samriti, if I'm not wrong, I think ten, twelve minutes.
We have.
Okay.
As an G, we have around ten, twelve minutes.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Uh so thanks cousin, I maybe what I'll do is I'll start with uh the question that you were working with uh Dori on like, you know. In terms of the balancing act, uh I mean, so one way to look at it is, um you know. There are different kind of interactions uh within the data economy, so the there is an interaction between the data controller and processor. Uh data controller and the user, uh so the balancing act in terms of the amount of information. That we can share in each of these interactions between the government and also these entities, right? So the government would want more information if there is a breach from these entities. If there is no breach, they would want from statutory information, so. Basically, that balancing act will change based on the relationship where this disclosure is asked. Uh so on those two points on uh you know, uh twenty three, uh cross twenty three H on uh. Uh algorithms and also nineteen on portability, uh I I I would agree with Gori on the statement that. There seems to be uh an issue of understanding the fine print on the recommended J P C report. We are not sure what uh, I mean, the text indicates something, but the explanation indicates something else. Uh so at this stage, B S A, we recommend that, you know, the remove, we remove that requirement completely, right? So basically remove the requirement to provide uh details of algorithms, uh because there is lack of clarity. Imagine like for a lot of companies, uh you know, getting products and services that. Uh more efficiently and effectively is their defining uh you know service. So it is going to be extremely challenging to have uncertainty account around any sort of, any any requirements to reveal algorithm. But that said, transparency for consumers is important, they need to understand how certain decisions are made in the interest of fairness. But for that, we have Niti Ayog, Meti working on some of these issues, right? So it would be interesting to see how the D P A would work with some of these bodies who are knee deep into these issues, right? Niti Ayog has been working for a long time, Meti has taken up through the N P A I initiative. Uh so it would be interesting to see how those discussions play out. So it is important that the bill encourages D P A to work on these matters, giving some guardrails. On data portability, uh it's, I mean, it doesn't seem like any, uh it's not in the grade, uh basically. There was uh uh you know, uh we are, our recommendation is retain that trade secret exemption for portability, right? So uh otherwise it creates enormous uncertainty, uh given India's. Uh own legal system around tape secrets, it creates further uncertainty. So I think those are. Uh I mean, I'll stop, make it short for that particular section. The other point that you asked is how do we integrate with this global world as companies, I mean, B S A companies in general. But also a lot of Indian companies are going global, uh just yesterday I heard like, you know, I I I'm from Chennai, so. A SaaS startup from Chennai, the first customer was in Australia and that was a public school and how cross-border data was important for them, right? So uh these are stories that you get every day, small companies being global, giving their services to small towns across the world, right? It's uh this is a story that's coming up consistently in the Indian growth story, in the global growth story. Uh so. As the data protection regime in India develops, we see that first, this has to interact well with existing legislations. Whether it's G D P R uh or uh and the P I P in Japan or in Singapore or in. Uh any other legislation. So I think that interaction becomes critical, uh so it's sort of co-develop this as we build it from ground up. Like make sure that we are in conversation with these uh you know, global uh organizations, uh governments. Because, you know, they have already gone through some of this journey, uh and it would be interesting to see what influences they have got. So that's number one. Number two, I mean, so ongoing conversations as we develop this from ground up. I mean, the second point uh would be around. It's important to note that and what would India need at this stage, right? So that's the best uh metric to go by, right? Uh at a stage when the Indian startups are growing, uh global companies are trying to invest in India. Where would we be seeing a data protection legislation? Privacy and data protection need to be the core focus of this legislation. Given that that enhance trust that users like you and me would place in the ecosystem. The moment that trust erodes or there is a trust deficit, then it will be really tough for companies to gain that back. So focus should be continuously on the personal data protection elements of the bill. And remove all that, everything else that does not fit into the, I I'll stop there and it over back to you.
Yeah, thanks Venky, I just have one follow-up question on, you know, you you mentioned fairness of application. And also just, you know, around what, how do we asserten fairness of application, right? Is there a method, uh existing method which we can borrow and I I would happy to be, you know, to have Rahul and others also come in later. Just sort of wanted to get a little pers- perspective on that because it seemed that the intention of the committee has been to bring more transparency and fairness. And you know, maybe some of these clauses may not help achieve that, so maybe the intention is 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 good, but the way they are trying to approach is a little bit sort of. Uh directed in a different fashion and also one more question on the whole processes of companies, right? Companies which are global in nature, even Indian companies which will operate in the, which have been operating globally and and the SaaS startup you mentioned is a very interesting example. Or a case study. So let's say, you know, you have certain in uh operating standards in Europe, in the U S. And of in E P A C region and then you have to operate in India with a totally different set of processes. Is 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 that a correct assessment?
Uh cousin, can you repeat that last part, uh my uh technology?
No, no, so the question was that. Yeah, so basically for companies which are operating in different jurisdictions, adapting processes. Is easier when you have a uniformed uh application across different jurisdictions. But let's say one important jurisdiction which uh of adopts a different method. When it comes to, you know, certain aspects when it with regard to non-person data or I P. Intersection with data portability or the disclosure of algorithm, etcetera. Does that really impede or impact the global processing systems for those companies?
If I may, I'll take only the second question, maybe I'll let others go on the first. So I mean, it does tremendously impact uh. Cousin, uh given that uh currently. How, I mean, how we are looking at the technology world grow is through, uh you know, a global digital world. Uh companies are making products and apps for, uh you know, uh citizens across the world. At least, uh you know, if you have a cloud service or if you are giving a a a service to um consumers directly. Uh what you're trying to do, uh what companies are trying to do is give a service that's global. Uh now that is the nature of the game today. Uh so it definitely impacts on how, uh you know, uh. Piece-meal legislations that would come up in different countries across the world. Uh would affect the nature of this, uh you know, uh technology. So I mean, that's in terms of impact on companies, I'd say, yes, I mean. Uh what governments have to be cognizant of it, uh they need not necessarily address this issue because they have their own concerns. But the one thing that we try to flag is uh in 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 India's case, bringing that point back is. You know, if your existing laws uh have to, you know, safeguard privacy first and also promote business, uh you know. You need to make sure your objectives for the policy are clear and then you achieve those objectives. In the case of Europe, uh when G D P R came up, there was al- already, uh you know, a sufficient literature of work around privacy. That that was happening in Europe and so they were able to take ten years to move forward on it. Uh in India's perspective, uh the objectives are on, you know, if you are able to make something unique on non-person data. It would be extremely challenging for companies to re-engineer their products at this stage and come up with a progression.
I think that's an important point and if we have time, would love to get other perspective, but Shahana, over to you. Uh and I think you've heard, I think one of the advantages of being the last speaker is always that there's a great context, you know, which you can then build upon. So I think uh you've got a really good context, I think all the other speakers have given really important points in terms of application. The the fairness question versus excessive disclosure, you know, the issues around uh how companies will operate globally. And how their processes get may get impacted, startup story. Uh so broadly, it seems that uh the sort of the. The way the bill is prepared right now and the way, you know, the intellectual property rights, commercial rights of companies. Uh with respect to, you know, non-person data or the demand for non-person data, anonymized data. As well as, you know, uh algorithm disclosure and data portability requirements, it seems it will impede on their intellectual property, right? So just sort of wanted to bring you in terms of final remarks for everybody and also in terms of what are your sort of key. Sort of challenges and concerns over here, so over to you.
Totally agree, there are significant advantages on being the last speaker. Um I think, you know, just to echo what all of my other panelists have said. Um I think there is absolute clarity that we do need a data protection law. Um there is absolute clarity that we do need an enabling regulatory framework to grow our digital economy. Um you know, we we all recognize that we want to move from being just a feeder economy. For the growth of digital products and assets to being, um you know, the the hub and to being the center. Where where there is actually product development happening, where there are innovations around rights, not just digital assets, right? So I think um from a foundational point of view, I don't think that there is any disagreement between lawmakers, industry. Uh you know, everyone is in agreement about that. I think um as kind of closing remarks, I think what my, uh you know. Let me focus on what what I would like to see happen going forward as a rational way forward uh from my perspective. Um I think I completely agree with Deepak G that, you know, we do need to have something of an incremental process in place. Right? I think that there is a significant jumping of the gun, uh where we're talking about a data protection bill. Uh you know, to begin with, I think it's more a data governance bill than anything else, which is trying to address privacy, trying to address national security. It's trying to address uh you know, commercial uh growth in the digital sector. Um I think there has to be a rationalization of what is it that we want to achieve from a legislative process. What is it that we want to legislate on to begin with, right? Um because if you look at some of the recommendations around just non-personal data in the in the J P C report. Um there are some places where, you know, the the implication is that the government will have the ability to bring in a policy framework, right? So policy framework means a non-binding framework, uh which will then be the genesis of typically another regulatory framework, right? Um but in other places of the recommendations, there are mandatory obligations around, um you know. N P D breach reporting, for example, right? So what is it that we are looking at in terms of what do we want to legislate at this point? Um because any law that touches upon um data. And the way in which data is being leveraged today is not going to be, uh you know, if it's looking at miniscule. Uh mechanisms, it's not going to be relevant, it's not going to be relevant three months from now, right? So we have to think about what are the kind of institutional frameworks we want to have in place that will survive the kind of innovation we are seeing in technology. Um and we have to think about what is it that we want to regulate, how do we want to regulate and do we want to do it in the form of one omnibus. Um legislation which will have all of these various conflicting positions which, by the way, not only will. Kind of scuttle a lot of the way in which our digital economy is developing because, you know, a lot of our panelists have talked about. Uh just the the data lifecycle and how contractual mechanisms have developed. Uh whether you're talking about big enterprises or even S M A's, right? Um a lot of the contractual mechanisms that are used by S M A's to leverage big data, for example. Is fairly established now, right? There are certain uh go-to mechanisms, anonymization is accepted. As a mechanism that, uh you know, balances with individual privacy. So you're, you know, potentially looking to scuttle a lot of that established practice and what implication that is going to have on the digital economy is. You know, I I don't think any of us can foresee that. Um so having said all, and you know, there's also a very important question of. Uh increasing the administrative burden on the institutions that the D P bill is looking to set up as well, right? You are looking to set up a D P A which will not only administer, enforce and protect. Data subject rights, they will also possibly govern uh or or have a say in, you know. Uh data transfers and N P D in breach reporting. Um so you're really looking to very significantly. Increase the administrative burden as well. So I think um in in summary, my hope is that. If the government is able to take pause, um consider all of the different moving parts that are already in play. As far as our data governance strategy is concerned, um rationalize it in terms of talking about what are some of the principles we want in play. Um can we look at mechanisms like standard setting instead of matching. Um uh you know, certain types of data sharing, etcetera, can we look at standard setting? Um so you know, the the hope is that, um and I think we have relied very heavily. We have taken cue very heavily from certain jurisdictions. Um those jurisdictions have followed a similar path, right? That they have put in a lot of analysis and thought on what is your overall strategy. Then let's think of what about a legislation for data privacy, let's think about a legislation for institutional data governance, right?
Hmm.
So let's take a cue from from those jurisdictions for for our overall strategy as well.
Well, I'm sorry, I have to come in between now here, Mister Rizvi, it's time for us to actually wrap up the session because we've gone slightly overboard with the time here.
Yeah, yeah. No, thank you, Samriti. I, Varun also texted me, so I knew that, you know, the time had come to wrap it all up. Uh you know, when the time is there, we'll have, we all have to go, but this is such an interesting discussion that, you know, I know everybody would love to stick around for a little more time. It'd be great if Ashish Khan could have provided us maybe a little more time to discuss this, but I know there are other speakers waiting and there are other panels we have to do and. I think it's also lunch hour for most of us, so I won't really waste much time in summing it up, but thank you so much to all our participants for giving this perspective, legal perspective. Industries perspective, startup perspective, I think these are all important points which were discussed in this consultation. I don't think we had such discussion in the last three months since the time the J P C published this report, you know. So it was very important to talk about data portability and, you know, the intersection with intellectual property and how algorithm disclosures may lead to that. I think three broad areas I want to submit of, one, there is a need for transparency and fairness, but is this the right way to go about it? There has, there is a lot of debate to be done and we hope that some of these discussions will reach the right places, the right people in the government. And hopefully, you know, they will look at some of these issues and try to sort of, you know, uh work on the bill. Uh second point, I think, is around policy clarity and regulatory clarity, right? So there's a lot of confusion with regard to what the language is talking about, uh what is the objective really? And if the objective is to bring in greater fairness, then whether the language has to be improved or changed or amended. And I think the third point is around just the larger industry back, right? The both startups and the companies which operated in India. How do we make Indian laws more interoperable, more harmonized with local data protection regime and what are the best practices? While setting standards, which I think Shahana really sort of brought out in the end, is to have strong standards, have a good data governance strategy. And then look at different ways of data protection. You have a bill which protects privacy, but then you have other regulations which can look at. How you deal with non-person data and how I P rights have to be protected, etcetera. But thank you all for being around and thank you, Ashish Khan, for allowing us to have the discussion, much needed. And we hope that we'll continue to have such dialogues uh in the future as well. So have a good afternoon, everybody.
For moderating us and being with us together.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mister Rizvi, for moderating the session for us. Of course, we'd also extend our heartiest gratitude to each one of you speakers, panelists for sharing with us your thoughts on the topic. And now we'll quickly take a fifteen minute break, this is a quick lunch break that we can all take and come back. For another interesting panel discussion that we have right after the break, it's on. for another interesting panel discussion that we have right after the break. It's on evolving of the Indian data protection journey, the approaches, the frameworks and what the industry really needs and what future uh it actually holds for all of us. So um that's what we'll be discussing post the break, fifteen minutes it is. Let's gather here back before two. Thanks.
Thank you.